Okay, we'll call them you need to order. Uh, welcome everyone to the July tenth planning commission meeting. Before we get, um.
Use your mic.
Yes, before we get going, um. Let's take a, um, a roll call first. And we already have some excused absences, so I'm just gonna go through.
We know, Dr. Robbins.
Um, yeah, we know who they are.
Okay. Uh, Dr. Robbins, excuse?
Um, yeah, well, actually Megan usually does the roll call.
Okay, go.
Okay. Uh, Joe Man.
Megan, speak into the microphone, please.
Joe Man. Tom Salberg.
Here.
Jim Bomker.
Excused.
DG Garcia.
Not yet. She's trying.
She's trying, yeah, so, so, so we'll have to know as soon as she joins, she is trying to join.
Charlie Jinks. Dale Robbins. Bill Foyer.
Here.
Jean Hushel.
Here.
Troy Mullenets.
Here.
Now, if I can just note, uh, DG is online now. And, um, uh, so Jim Bomker, um, had let us know that he was requesting to be excused from this meeting, he's traveling. Joe Man also requested to be excused as he is ill. Uh, so the, so our two alternates, our, our two adjuncts will be voting members tonight. And DG is with us via Zoom.
Can you hear us, DG?
I can hear you. Oh, there, there we go. I can hear you now. I have no idea why it, um. Well, I have so much trouble, but, uh. It doesn't give me video, but at least I can hear you.
We can hear you just fine.
Good.
Um, Dale is, Dale is not on.
Okay, maybe he's gonna come.
I, I assume he's gonna be here.
But we have a court.
We do have a court. So can you call up my presentation, please, Evan? If you go, go to the next slide, please. So we are on agenda review.
Okay. With regard to the agenda, does anybody have any, uh, changes to propose for the? General business or public hearings? If not. Can I? Have a motion to approve the agenda as it, as, as it stands?
Move to approve.
Thank you, moved by Charlie Jinks.
Thank you.
Bill Fuller, your seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Yeah.
Also, um, approval of the minutes from May eighth, we have them in our packet. Does anybody have any changes to them?
I believe it should say June 12th, although, um.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking. It did say May. Yeah, June 12th. Hearing none, and I have a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
And second, we'll give the tie to, uh, Mr. Herschel. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Onto the public hearings.
So, um, if you could go on to the next slide, please, just a general procedural that I'd like to share with everybody, next slide, please. Um. So we have two hearings tonight, uh, the first is gonna be the proposed lighting code amendments. And the second are the proposed amendments for fueling stations, stations as an accessory use. Um, uh, the way the order proceeding goes, uh, we begin with a staff report. Uh, followed by, um, in the case of lighting standards, the applicant has an opportunity to testify. Then we take public comments if the, uh, if the applicant has any rebuttal, he'll speak. And then we'll go into deliberations. And then we'll take the second hearing. Um, if there are people in the audience who wish to speak, we do have a form to sign in on. Um, and we'd ask you to fill out the form, and if you could give it to Megan, our clerk. When it gets time for public comment, we are gonna be limiting public comment to three minutes. Uh, per person. And so, um, but, uh, so if you, if you wish to speak, please feel free to do so. Uh, to sign up and, uh, with that. Uh, also, I should note that we also will offer an opportunity for those who are attending virtually. To, um, comment as well. Uh, so you'll just need to put something into the chat so that, um, our moderator Evan can, um. Can call you up when the time comes. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Amy.
All right. Good afternoon, commissioners. Um, so our first hearing is on, um. A proposed amendment to lighting standards for participant and spectator sport facilities. Um, this proposal was not, um. This proposal was not initiated by staff, but by a private applicant. So I would like to just remind the commission that this, these particular changes do not apply to a specific property or a specific user. They apply to all types of uses that would be categorized as participant and spectator sports. And would apply to all of the zones that are listed within the amendment. So just to make sure that we're keeping that broad view of, of what the impacts of this will be. Um, next slide, please. So the proposal will amend the lighting standards for participant and spectator sports, um, in the mixed use zone. So the M1, M2, C1, C2, RDC. And the industrial zones, um, it will also amend the limited use standards for this use in the M1 and M2 zones. Because that is where they are allowed as a limited use only. Next slide, please. So as a reminder, um, participant and spectator sport facilities are defined as a use in which the sport or recreation is conducted within an enclosed structure or an outdoor facility. Examples include, but are not limited to bowling alleys, roller and ice skating rinks, dance halls, racquetball courts, video game parlors, water parks, basketball and football stadiums, racetracks and arenas. Slide please. So this is a map, um, a spatial representation, if you will, of where the amendments would have a potential impact. Um, the, uh, the crosshatch in the middle is just to be very clear that that does not, is not where it applies. But everything else within the red is where it would potentially apply. Next slide, please. So within the lighting section of our development code, um, if approved, the amendments would allow, would expand the allowable hours of operation. It would increase the allowable glare rating from G3 to G5, as long as it is at least 150 yards from a residential zone. Um. It also, um, permits light trespass onto adjacent properties. Under the condition that an easement has been signed and recorded by both, by both parties. Um, and the specific language for these are contained within your packets. Next slide, please. So the amendments would also, um, change, as I mentioned, change the limited use standards, um, in the M1 and M2 zones. And what it would essentially do is remove the language that's there now that limits the hours of operation. And so that particular, um, aspect would then just be regulated by the, um, by the changes that are within the lighting code. Rather than being within the limited use standards of the individual zones. Next slide, please. So a procedural summary, um, we have workshopped these amendments with the planning commission at your April, May and June meetings. Um, the SEPA and public hearing notices were, um, distributed on June 24th. The SEPA comment and appeal period ended on July 9th. We're having our planning commission here on July 10th. We will ask you to ratify your findings and recommendations at your August meeting. And we have tentative, we have a tentative public hearing, um, before the city council scheduled for August 20th. Next slide, please. So there are several goals and policies in our comprehensive plan that speak to what has been proposed. I will not read all of these to you, but there are four goals and five policies total that we felt were relevant. Next slide, please. Um, I will specifically draw your attention to urban design policy 14, as that one specifically speaks to lighting. In an effort to preserve the value of the community's night sky, outdoor lighting should be downward facing and shall be limited in height, number and intensity of fixtures. Needed to provide sufficient security and identification on residential, commercial and other developments. Next slide, please. So when you guys begin your deliberations, um, staff will be asking, um, for the following findings. Um, that we will be asking you to find that the required SEPA review has been completed on the proposed amendment. All public and agency notice requirements were met and accomplished in the timely matter. The public was provided an opportunity for early and continuous participation. The public had the opportunity to submit written comments and testified a public hearing before the planning commission. Next slide. Section 10, 4B dash 5 of our development code requires that in order to amend the development code, the, this commission must find that one of the following applies. Such amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and is not detrimental to the public welfare. Changes in economic, technological or land use conditions has occurred to warrant the modification. It's found that the, that an amendment is necessary to correct an error. It is found that an amendment is necessary to clarify meaning or intent. It is found that an amendment is necessary to provide for uses that were, that was not previously addressed. Or those amendments as deemed necessary by the city council as being in the public interest. So as you proceed through your deliberations and through this process, please try and kind of keep those in the back of your mind. Cause those are the things that we'll be asking you towards the end. And with that, I'll turn it over to applicant testimony.
Do we have anyone online? That is? The applicant on this?
We were supposed to have.
Good afternoon, Nathan Smith, on behalf of the, um, applicant here. I apologize for the delay. Jose, uh, Pesmino and I were coordinating who was gonna be presenting on behalf, uh, this afternoon. Um, again, Nathan Smith, I'm attorney at Q-Tech Rock here on behalf of, uh, Top Golf, Top Golf for purposes of this amendment. Um, just a few comments, as I know, we've provided, uh, quite a number of PowerPoint presentations to the planning commission. And worked with, um, city staff as well, uh, to, um. Address comments and questions and concerns from the planning commission, um, as, uh, as this has gone through the, the process. So, uh, to, to, to briefly, uh, comment on this, this is a lighting amendment and an amendment to the limited use requirements, um. That are, that are required to accommodate the unique use, uh, of Top Golf. It was not previously contemplated at the time, the lighting and limited use requirements of the development code were amended and adopted. Specifically, this amendment would allow for the regular operation of a Top Golf, uh, facility in Liberty Lake. Um, just as a little bit of a reminder, this concept, uh, Top Golf is a state of the art sports and entertainment venue consisting of. Technologically advanced and climate controlled two level golf driving range. Um, with a full service restaurant and bar facilities for an inclusive high tech golf game that everyone of all ages and skill levels can enjoy. This amendment that is presented and contained within the packet that was produced, uh, is the result of the coordination between the city staff and the planning commission through. A number of workshops with, with our intent being, um, to adhere to the purchase, purpose of the city's comprehensive plan. Uh, by encouraging lighting and use restrictions that preserve, uh, the work of the city's night sky while allowing for the commercial recreation. Use of Top Golf and other uses. Um, of course, if this passes, um. Top Golf is excited to bring the opportunity to the city of Liberty Lake, and of course, we are here to answer, uh, any questions. Thank you.
Do we need the commissioners to have questions for the applicant? Public comment.
We did receive one public comment in favor of the proposal from. Jared Von Tobal. Very, very close to the beginning of this meeting.
And didn't we receive one by e- email earlier too? Or was that regarding the?
I believe that was regarding the next public hearing on the, on the lighting, I think we've only received one.
All right. Any comments in the? Audience?
Sounds good to me.
All right. How do you want to do?
Next slide, please.
Next slide, please.
Next slide, please.
Uh, there's nothing for the applicant to rebut. Uh, Nathan, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Uh, nothing else. Again, if the planning commission has anything, uh, further, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Nathan. I think it was very thorough, the several times that you've spoken with us.
Next slide, please. My next slide, please.
Okay. We, uh, before we go through, uh, and make our recommendations, um. We have to answer these questions, and we've done this before, that, that it's up on the board. So unless, um, you wanna have, uh, some testimony or some comments from the. Uh, commission, then I think we're just gonna answer these questions and, and, uh.
Well, Mr. Chair.
So you agree.
I have a couple of questions.
Charlie, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'm interested in knowing if. You have, have, if we have ever had any similar requests to change the lighting standards. In these same districts that we're talking about today for this particular use.
Are you addressing that to the city staff?
Yes.
The, the answer is no, not for this particular use. As, as I've indicated in the workshops, we did do, um, an overhaul of our lighting standards. Because it was very date, we had very dated lighting standards, and I want to say that was in 2020. 2021 timeframe.
Uh, so, so would this change then bring the standard up to a more of a current standard?
This, this is specifically addressing a use, uh, that hadn't been considered previously. And providing for. Uh, an expansion on some of the, the, the standards related to the, the bug ratings for this particular use. Would limit, but while limiting the hours of operation, number one, and number two, providing some setbacks. From residential zones so as not. To, uh, negatively impact the residential.
We're talking 150 yards, as I recall.
That is correct.
And there's also a provision in, in this. Document that provides for getting easements from owners?
Yes, and that, so this was, this was something that was proposed by the applicant.
Okay.
We actually have always considered that to be a potential. Right now, there, with the bug ratings, um, uh, bug stands for backlight, um, up glow. And glow or uplight and glow, the light trespass, it always had to be, you couldn't have light trespass onto your neighboring, uh, property by more than 10 feet. It had to be a point one fifth. Put handle at the boundary and, and, uh, zero, 10 feet beyond the boundary. However, however, we've always considered it that if you got a light, uh, uh, a, a light trespass easement that was recorded. And ran with the land, that, that, um, an adjacent owner would say, yeah, I like more light on my property. And which, which actually makes sense if you're like an RV, uh, dealership. Or you're, you're, you're a different, uh, a type of use where that's actually beneficial from a security standpoint.
The issue that I see is that, in, in, in one of the zones that we're talking about allowing this change. Is immediately adjacent to a fairly dense, single family zone. On the inland, on the north side of the I-9 corridor. So my question is this, if you, if the applicant then goes and tries to get this easement, and he's got. Uh, 25 homes, he's got to go to to get this easement approved. And he has, let's say, three or four holdouts that do not want to sign, then is the deal over?
Then the deal would be over, that is correct.
Okay, all right. So one guy decides he's not gonna sign, he doesn't like the idea of the spill and the easement encumbering his property, then Top Golf.
So, and I would expect that, um, residential users, first of all, it has to be, uh, set back 150 yards.
Stand.
So it's pretty hard to get that, that light trespass that far. Um, that's number one, but number two, uh, I would expect that, um, it would only be with adjacent uses where it would be a compatible. It would be compatible. I would not expect a residential user ever to grant an easement like that.
One of my concerns with this application is that. And I voiced this, and I, look, I apologize for not attending the two workshops, cause I was on vacation. But I did have the good fortune to drive by two top golf facilities on the east coast. And I was amazed, and I think. People that haven't been to one would be shocked at how large these facilities are. Just as a point of reference, the flagpole that's in front of Camping World is 120 feet tall. The standards that hold up the nets for Top Golf are 150 feet tall. That's per their, their, their website.
We're talking about a lighting code amendment at this point?
I understand, I understand.
Okay, let's stick with the topic at hand, okay?
Please bear with me, Mr. Chair. Please bear with me, I'll get there. My concern is. This is all about. The light issue relative to Top Golf, and that's why he's here testifying. My concern is that this. Revised standard applied to all of these districts could, could create an issue that we'll regret.
Okay. Is there anything, are there other questions that you have?
Would it be possible to then change the number of districts that this would apply to?
Zones?
Yes, zones, so I'm sorry, okay.
That certainly, so the, so the planning commission can make recommendations. To approve, to approve with modifications or to deny. So it's absolutely within the purview of this body to make a recommendation to amend the proposed amendments. To modify the proposed amendments.
Well, then in that case, it, it, is this the appropriate time to make my? Request?
So that you can certainly discuss what your request is, but it would need to come in the form of a motion once the commission was actually.
We're not into that.
You, you're not quite there yet, because this was the opportunity for questions.
I will wait, okay, any other questions?
I just have a comment to that, Commissioner Jinks. I appreciate what you're saying, and I initially felt the same way when this first, uh, came up. Um, in our first meeting, um, but I have since not seen a reason to. Cut out any specific zone for this particular thing, because we're not talking about just Top Golf, this applies to everything. Um, you know, I think, uh, Bill brought up, you know, potential for baseball soccer fields or other uses. So this isn't just a Top Golf thing, and I think that's. Number one, hard for the public sometimes to understand that, and for us as commissioners to understand that and to make a recommendation. Just not based on one thing, and that was hard for me to wrap my head around initially too. And I'm not saying that you're not seeing the bigger picture, but I felt the same way that you did initially. And so I appreciate you bringing that up. Um, I just have not personally found a reason to change any of the zones because of that. So, okay. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? And let's move on. To the deliberations and conclusions, we're supposed to go through these that are on the board here. And so, um, as I think Amy had, had read, um, before. Uh, we're just gonna go through these and. Say yes or no, and if we do it by a, a hand count as to whether or not. Um, each one of these meets the criteria, okay? So is the proposed amendment consistent with the comp plan and not detrimental to public welfare?
Oh, wait. Well, first we need the, uh, a motion on the procedural side of it?
Oh, are we gonna go to this now?
That, that's what's up on the screen right now.
Oh, okay.
It's the recommended findings.
Oh, that's what you said to do here. Okay. Okay. Back up, rewind, uh, before we go through the, each of the deliberations and conclusions. The findings are that required SEPA review was completed, all public and agency notices were met. But public was provided with the opportunity for early and continuous participation. And the public had opportunity to submit written comments and testify at a public hearing. Do I have a motion that those were met? So moved by Commissioner Fuller. Second by Commissioner Herschel. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye, and DG, speak up so we can hear you.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay. And all opposed, nay? Right, it's unanimous that we, um, have found that the, um. Criteria for approval was met. Ananously. Now. Is the proposed amendment consistent with the comp plan and not detrimental to public welfare? Do you have a motion on every one of these, or?
You have, you have two options, you could go through and discuss all six of them and then make one motion if there's consensus. If there's disagreement, you can take, uh, you can decide to vote on those, those that there's disagreement on.
How would you like to proceed?
I concur with that statement, statement number one that you just made.
Does anybody not concur with that statement? DG?
No, I concur.
Okay, then the answer to that is yes. And we don't need to vote on that until the end, do we?
You, you can, you can do them all together.
Yes.
And i- if you have, if you find disagreement with any of them, you can take a vote on that.
Go separate.
Yeah.
Okay. Secondly, then is a proposed amendment warranted by a change in economic, technological and or land use conditions?
Did you make a recommendation?
I am not making a recommendation.
Okay, then I will. I would say it is not, uh, warranted by change in economic, technological or land use conditions.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Agreed. Okay. Should make a motion on this, DG, you're.
Agreed.
Okay, we have. All right, then we'll, um, entertain a motion. On this particular issue, separate from the others, is the proposed amendment warranted by a change in economic, techn- technological and or land use conditions?
Do you want a motion? You just wanna discuss it before we get into a motion?
Well, we can discuss it, uh, after the motion too.
I thought we were going through all of them. And go back to the ones that we disagreed.
Okay, we could do that.
You're the boss.
Oh, the, the most expedient way to me is the best way. So, okay, we're just, we're gonna put an asterisk by number two. Number three, is a proposed amendment necessary to correct an error?
Okay, I'll propose it is not.
Second. Anybody disagree with that? DG, are you in, in agreement with that?
Yes, and I can hear you clearly.
Okay, thanks, DG.
Mm-hmm.
Moving on to the next, is proposed amendment necessary to clarify meaning or intent?
Is not.
I would agree.
I agree.
DG?
Agreed.
Okay. Is a proposed amendment necessary to provide for a proposed use that was not previously addressed?
I would say, suggest that it is.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Troy.
Oh, I'm sorry, agreed.
Say, okay. Is a proposed amendment deemed necessary as being in the public interest?
Is not.
Okay, I'm gonna come back to those two then. So. Do we wanna handle this with discussion and a vote for number two and number? Six? Okay. Do I hear a motion on, um, is a proposed amendment warranted by a change? And if so, state what your proposal is.
Would we be able to hear Commissioner Hushel's reasoning for disagreeing with?
Sure, but when we get into the discussion, we're already on that, so. Yeah.
All right, well, I'll make a motion that the proposed amendment is not warranted by change in economic, technological and or land use conditions.
Hey, that's Commissioner Fuller, so here, second. Commissioner Jank seconds. Discussion, Eugene.
I think the amendment is warranted by change in economic. Situation. A technological situation. And the land use conditions, I see it's all three.
Okay.
When you take a look at, uh, the economic situation. We're then taking a piece of land that's just wide open. And converting it to a tax producing recreational facility for the community. So it's a positive thing. The technological, oh gosh. We had an enormous amount of time to discuss. The differences in light. And how light is shown from one. Type of a lab to another. That wasn't available nearly just a couple, couple of years ago. And then the land use, well, land use. Those are hidden, talks about the same things, is the economic conditions. So I think it's a minor point, proposed amendment. So I think it's a minor point, proposed amendment is, is warranted by change in economic technological and use conditions.
Okay. Reggie, you want to address that?
I mean, I, I would agree with that to a point if it was just for Topgolf, but again, this is. For any use that also been means changes. So it may not necessarily be a change in economic, technological, and the land use conditions if it's something other than Topgolf. Yes, Topgolf is the one that presented the amendment. But they may not, not even build here, right? It's not, it's not a done deal, so. That's why I would say it is not, because it's not necessarily Topgolf.
Well, if we just take one at a time, land use conditions, we're taking vacant land to make it producing. So therefore, whatever organization comes in, they're going to make a vacant piece of property, might not produce, now produce something. For the community to enjoy and for the city to benefit from.
Can I jump in?
Commissioner Fullier.
Thank you, uh, it, uh, I'd ask everybody to please, uh, approach this as it's an amendment to the illumination. Code as it stands, has nothing to do with any particular business. It applies to the zones we've identified, so the argument that it changes. And conditions, we're not changing any zoning, we're not, we're not changing any, any way any property can be, uh, used. To, as long as it meets this zoning requirement, it's, it's acceptable. All we're talking about here is an amendment to the illumination code. Which applies to many different applications, so for me, it's not changing the land use. It's clarifying the intent of the illumination of the, of that, the illumination code only, not the land use. Because the land use isn't going to change based on the zoning. Fair enough, and the same, the same argument can be used economically and techno- technological. Making this illumination change in that part of the code. Doesn't have an economic impact because we don't know who's going to put what where in these zones. And the same with technology. Again, there's, there's new technology, but we're not making this change, uh, because of technology, is my pick. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
I still disagree.
Okay.
Okay, hang on a sec before you disagree. Does anybody, any other comments from, or questions on this? Then go around, Eugene?
Um. We are changing the code to allow a facility to come in here. That normally wouldn't be allowed.
We're not, we're not, the city council is going to make all the decisions, we're making a recommendation.
But I mean, we're, we're setting the stage for that to occur.
This amendment relates to sports facilities in mixed-use zones.
Yeah, I, I would disagree, Gene, um, and, uh, one of the reasons why I would disagree is because the example would be. Would be, um, a sports facility at a school. And we talked about the fact that, um, Ridgeline High School came in under the old lighting code. It would not, the, the, uh, football field at Ridgeline High School would not have been permitted under this new code. Um, this would allow it with some limitations, uh, but it, but, but it would have allowed for that. We may have other elementary and middle schools in the future, um, in, in, in the city. That may be looking for sports fields. There's certainly been discussion about little league fields, et cetera. Those, it, it, this could apply to all those types of uses. Um, and some may be of economic benefit to the community, others may be more of a social community. Type of benefit, but the, but, but to, to Commissioner Fullier's point. Um, this is really changing lighting standards.
DG, I can't see if you're raising your hand. Do you have any thoughts?
No, I, I do agree with what Commissioner Fullier expressed, um. While I do always look at the pros and the cons, I cannot find one that, um, I would vote against this. So I am in, uh, complete agreement with Mr. Fullier.
Okay, and then.
Is it a vote separate on this?
So, so yeah, so, so I would, I would suggest that if there are no other comments to be made, we, there is a motion on the floor.
Okay. And we've had a motion in a second? Any further discussion? We've already got, yeah. Okay, hearing none, all in favor of that the proposed amendment is warranted by a change in economic, techni- technological and. Is, is, is not, I was going to say is not at the end, is not warranted. All in favor?
Okay.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and we're going. Five to one? And let's move to, is the proposed amendment deemed necessary as being in the public interest? That was the next one. Turner, do you want to state your thoughts on that?
Sorry?
Did you want to state your thoughts on that?
Uh, do we make a motion?
I don't.
I don't think we did. I make a motion, uh, to, uh, the proposed amendment is deemed necessary as being in the public interest.
Yes.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fullier and second by Commissioner Molenix, discussion. Hearing none? Um, all in favor of the proposed amendment is deemed necessary as being in the public interest? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Have we have one opposed, DG?
I said aye.
Okay.
I am for the amendment.
And we're five to one there too. Now we. Vote on the other four in the same manner, taking them as one, as one group.
Yep.
So, number one. Number three. Number four.
And number five.
And number five. Do I hear a motion to accept those as discussed?
The move.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Fullier and Commissioner Molenix, any discussion? DG?
No discussion here, aye.
Okay, all in favor of accepting the, as discussed, the recommendations on those, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, unanimous, six, six to nothing. Anything else?
You have a recommendation.
We have a recommendation that we will take to the city council to move ahead with, um, the proposed amendment. And we will, okay. Do we have a motion to make a recommendation to the city council to accept the, um. The change in the amendment to our lighting code?
Go move.
Commissioner, moves, DG seconds?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor of recommending approval to the city council, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 All opposed? All right. On to number two.
To number two, um. Fueling stations as an accessory use, next slide please. So this, this is one that the city began, uh, uh. Early in the, in, back in February, we first workshop this, and it is a city-initiated change to, um. Uh, address a use that has not previously be, been considered. Within our development code, the only, um, gas station we have identified. Is specifically a gas station slash convenience store, um, as a limited use, um, in the RDC and C2 zones. And that, um. And that, uh, specific. And that specifically, uh, that's the only gas station that's provided for in our zoning matrix. Um, it is allowed in, also in industrial zone, and I believe, um. With different standards in the, in mixed-use zones, um, in, in mixed-use zones, it's only allowed. If it's replacing an existing, um, gas station. Uh, so, and there are standards, uh, that as a limited use, uh, underground storage tanks. Shall not be located within a thousand-foot radius of a wellhead. Pump islands and other fuel dispensing, uh, tanks shall be located at least twenty-five feet from right-of-way lines. And convenience store gas stations shall not exceed eight pumps. And the building footprint shall not exceed eight thousand square feet per lot. A pump site is, uh, one, uh, dispenser which may be double-sided. So that's the, that's the standard for, um, our existing gas station convenience store. Next slide please. So, um, we are proposing a new use category. It is, um, an accessory fueling station. We're proposing it as a limited use in the RDC, C1 and C2 zones. Um, and it must be accessory to a permitted principal use within the zone. And, um, we've talked about a variety of different accessory uses that might, uh, that this, that might apply. Whether it's a grocery store or a big box store or, um, a, a fleet service. Or, um, other types. Now, after extensive, uh, workshopping on this, um, uh, the planning commission did recommend. That specifically we accept truck stops as a principal use, so we're not going to allow for. This, uh, truck stops as a principal use that would, where we would allow accessory fueling stations. Next slide please. So, um, again, this is our zoning map, and I pull it up here only to indicate for you, um, if, on this map. The C1 and C2 zones are the, are basically the red and the, and the yellow. Next slide please. And, um, uh, we, we are proposing changes to the zoning matrix to include this new land use. Fueling stations as an accessory use. As you can see, we are, um, it is allowed in, uh. C1 and C2. It's also allowed in M3, but there's this, there's an additional, there's an additional caveat on that. And that again is that it can't be, it must be, um, replacing an existing gas station. Next slide please. Um. Uh, we're also proposing changes to the zoning matrix in the River District. To allow the fueling stations as an accessory use in our, the RDC, which is, uh, River District Freeway Commercial Zone. Next slide please. Uh, proposed limited use standards for this, for this new, uh, use, accessory fueling station. Um, very similar to what we have for, uh, the, um, the gas station convenience store. Um, other than the fueling station must be accessory to a principal use that is permitted within the zone. Except that truck stops as the principal use shall be expressly prohibited. Um, and, uh, the other underground storage tanks, a thousand feet. Pump islands and other fuelings, dispensing stations, e.g. propane, shall be, uh, located at least twenty-five feet from the right-of-way. Um, and the change that fueling stations shall not exceed twelve pump sites. A pump site is one dispenser that may be double-sided. Next slide please. Um, we're also proposing to change, um, and there's an error on this slide, and I believe also in the staff report. That actually, the convenience store gas stations are actually eight thousand square feet is the limit on the building, but. We are proposing that they also, if, if we allow this for other accessory uses, that we also allow it for convenience. Stores and gas stations, um, that, uh, up to twelve pump sites, so we're proposing that as well. And again, we have some grocery stores in those zones that, that, uh, that may benefit from this. Next slide please. So the next, I just want to touch on the procedural, uh, summary. Uh, we've, we started our workshops in February and, uh, we got a little derailed with some technology issues, but we were back on. In May and June, we had a very, uh, very, um, uh. Good discussion and, uh, really came up with some good, uh, side, sidebars or, or sideboards for this. Um, the CIPA, et cetera, we have followed the CIPA process, we've met the CIPA requirements, the CIPA. Comment period ended on, uh, July ninth, and since we had no CIPA comments, no one has standing to appeal. Um, planning commission hearing, um, is today. Uh, you'll be ratifying whatever your recommendation is on August fourteenth. And again, we've ten- tentatively, um, scheduled the city council hearing for the twentieth. I do want to point out that, um, we won't actually, we won't actually move forward to an ordinance. Unless, uh, council approves this, and then we'll have the first and second reads of the ordinances in September. Next slide please. Um, again, we have a number of relevant comp plan goals and policies, um, the first, uh, five that I have listed here really deal more with the process and. Procedural things that we've already talked about. Next slide please. I think it's, it's worth, uh, noting, uh, the last four, however, land use polit- policy two provides for compatible mix of housing and commercial uses. In all commercial districts, neighborhood centers, community centers, and the central business district. That's why this is a very limited, uh, proposed use, um, in the, uh, commercial zones. Um, to specifically, um, limit, uh, or to, to, to keep it in zones that it would be a compatible use. Economic Development Policy number four, to continue to support the startup retention, expansion, and recruitment of businesses. Economic Development Policy five, provide consistent, fair, and timely regulations. That are flexible, responsive, and effective, and Economic Development Policy six. Periodically review and update economic development techniques to provide a business climate conducive to new and startup businesses. And I will say that, um, for all of these, this is a consideration as we, as we workshop this, we looked at a number of. Uh, facilities, uh, a number of different uses, uh, where fueling was accessory and had up to twelve pumps. So it's, it, it's something that's relatively common, and, and again, that, that is a basis for kind of, uh, asking ourselves whether our limitation. Really serves the community from an economic development perspective. Next slide please. So recommended findings, again, these are the, the procedural ones, uh, staff can attest that we actually met. These based upon the procedural summary, but we will be asking you to make a motion to that effect during deliberations. Next slide please. And as you've already demonstrated in your, um, in your deliberations on the first hearing. Uh, city code does provide six criteria for approval. I want to note that, um, that. Any one of these could be a justification, however, I do also want to note. That, um, if any one of these is not consistent with the comp, or if it, with the exception of the comprehensive plan, if it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan. Uh, uh, in accordance with GMA, you could not adopt it without amending the comp plan, so, but. Other than that, uh, these are all or statements, so, um. Uh, with that, next slide please. Unless you have any questions for me, um, it's that time where we open it up for public testimony. And again, I'd like to suggest to the public that's in the audience. That, um, if you would like to speak, if you could please fill out the form and give it to Megan. Um, she can call your name one at a time. We will be limiting our testimony to three minutes, uh, per person. And once we've taken testimony from the public that is in the room. Uh, we will open it up to, uh, any members of the public that may be online, so, um.
You know, point of clarification on your presentation real quick, can you please go back to the zoning map?
Yes.
So this is. Yeah, point of clarification on this, the, the proposed change is only for the red and yellow zones, right? None of the blue zones?
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted that to be made clear to anybody that might be, um, in attendance or watching.
Yes.
None of the blue zones will, this will apply to.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Troy. Is there any public testimony? Anyone in the audience that? Do we have a main here?
Please, I, I'm going to. Please, I, I'm going to ask you to come to the podium. You have to state your name and address your record.
And if you're, if you're a city resident or not?
I am, I'm a resident, yes. And my name is Murray Dick. And I apologize to the planning commission that I, I have been out of town. We had a death in the family, I've been gone. I heard about Costco coming to town and being a done deal through the Spokane Review. And you know, it's been a hot topic. I, I retired and came back here. My wife is from here. And when I retired, we moved here. We come from Issaquah, where my daughter was raised. And we saw, I have nothing against Costco. I've been a member for, since they opened up memberships. But they're a different box store than I've ever seen before. They changed Issaquah in a way that I see Liberty Lake being changed if we allow Costco to open up a big box store and gas pumps. So my question was, this, this fuel change, is that, is that for Costco? Because they, they won't, they would not open up a store here if they can't have at least 24 pumps.
So that is, that is, this is a change in land use as we talked about with the lighting ordinance. This is a change to the development code. It is not specifically for Costco or anyone else. It, it applies to all the uses that are, that are potentially principal uses within these zones that could have an accessory gas station. And again, that, your statements regarding Costco are, it's, I, I are inappropriate at this hearing because it's really not, it's really not applicable to the.
Costco's not the applicant.
Okay, thank you. So the red, the red section is on the north, it is on the, on the south side and on the north side of I-90, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. So. Anyway. I, I appreciate it and we'll, I'll keep in touch. So when it is appropriate, I can come and, you know, hopefully we keep our eyes wide open of, traffic is the big issue.
And you can come, thank you for sending the email to all of us earlier, wasn't that, wasn't that yours?
Yes.
Okay, and you can also come and testify at the when the city council considers this as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I should note, I, I forgot to mention that we did also have a written comment from, also from Jared Von Tobo in support of this that has been copied to the planning commission. My apologies, I, I forgot that.
Oh, thank you. And I know we have at least one more person in the chambers. Please come on up. Thanks Laura.
Thank you.
Okay. Nope, is Bruce here? Oh, that's. Oh, okay.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for the time to speak my piece here. My name's Howard Shulian. I am not from Liberty Lake, but I would like to enter a statement of support for the increase in fuel pumps. You know, some of the, the key components here, the benefit of the city for this increase, it would be, as mentioned earlier, improved traffic flow. So being able to better distribute traffic on the site can not only relieve congestion on the premises, but also the adjacent traffic leading on to the streets that are adjacent to the site. Meeting growing demand is another one. You know, the community continues to grow, so there's demand for convenient fueling options. And the increase in the number of pumps here is a proactive measure to meet that demand. And finally, as Lisa mentioned, really just consistency with industry standards. A lot of other jurisdictions have increased their total pump counts to meet these and found not only economic benefits, but again, reduce congestion as well in these areas. So thank you for my time and that was the end of my statement.
Thank you.
Did you have any others Megan? Are there any online? Thank you. So with that, next slide. Well, we're on to, we're on to deliberations. Can you move forward in the slides to deliberations?
Okay, and before we do this, if I'm going to do it the right way, before we go through deliberations, would you like us to find, hear a motion as to whether or not this was done in the proper manner as was done before? The findings that the staff has given, the required SEPA review has been completed. All public agency notices requirements were met. Public was provided with early and continuous participation opportunities and the public had the opportunity to submit written comments and testify. Do I have a motion to to adopt the staff's recommended findings?
So move.
Okay, Commissioner Herschel makes a motion and Commissioner Jenks seconds. Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye DG? Thank you. That's, everybody here either had their hand up or not, so that is unanimous. I think I did it right this time. And now if, was the difficult, was that difficult going through them one at a time the last time? Do you want to do it differently? Okay, then I just suggest that we're going to go through them one at a time. And if we have, we don't have consensus, we don't have agreement in here, then we'll have a discussion and vote on them separately. Is that okay? Okay. Is the proposed amendment consistent with the comp plan and not detrimental to the public welfare?
Agreed.
Okay. Do we have a motion to that effect?
Do you need one?
Well, I think that we did.
We're going to do them all, all at the end.
Do you want to do that all, okay?
And only that we don't agree on, we would do a motion, that's what.
Consistent with the comp plan or not? The answer is yes. And does anybody disagree with that? Any other? And DG said yes. Number two, is the proposed amendment warranted by a change in economic, technological and/or land use conditions?
I propose that it is due to land use conditions.
Yes.
Thanks.
Agreed?
Agreed.
Okay, we have agreement on that? Is a proposed amendment necessary to correct an error? I do not believe it is.
It is not.
Is not.
Although there was the change in the number of pumps to be consistent in the other zones that were already at eight. So I don't think it's necessarily an error, but there is also the change.
Clarification.
It's an enhancement.
Clarification.
An enhancement, I like that.
To be consistent.
Okay DG?
I agree.
Okay. Is a proposed amendment necessary to clarify meaning or intent?
It is not.
It is not?
We just went from eight to 12. I would think that would be clarifying.
Okay.
Well, clarifying meaning. We already have the meaning, we're just.
Meaning or intent is the only part of this.
Okay, I withdraw.
Okay. Any other? DG?
Agreed.
Okay, is a proposed amendment necessary to provide for a proposed use that was not previously addressed?
It is.
Absolutely.
I think it is.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay. Is a proposed amendment deemed necessary as being in the public interest?
It is.
Agreed.
All right. Do I hear a motion to accept as stated, all of the six?
Move to accept.
Whatever they are, thank you. Charlie's moves, they have a second.
Second.
Second by Troy. Discussion.
I'm ready to vote.
Oh, looks like we're all ready to vote. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. DG?
Aye.
Thank you. And all opposed? There were none. Now, we also want to make a motion, I'll entertain a motion to present these recommendations to the city council.
Correct.
Go move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Quit laughing Amy.
Can I ask for that motion to be clarified that you're recommending to approve the proposed amendments?
No.
Is that what you would like us to do?
I, I'd like you to state the recommendation as it's stated in the for clarity sake.
Do we have a motion to accept the recommendations as, as included in the staff report and as discussed here?
So move.
Okay, we all right. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous and we will present it to the recommendations to the city council and the right opportunity. Moving right ahead.
We're on to reports.
Please give us a report.
So I'm going to keep it relatively brief and let you get out on this gloriously hot evening. I did want to let you know that we have been working, staff has been working on a draft of the public engagement plan. And we have also met with the Public Engagement Commission. This is, so this is the public, the public engagement plan for the comprehensive plan. Public particip, they call it public participation. It's the public participation plan for the comprehensive plan. But we've also met with community engagement to provide input on that. We are getting very close to a draft that we would like to workshop with you in August since we're still grappling with the housing piece with the the planning technical advisory committee and SKEO and whatnot. And so we, but we do want to focus on that. And one of the things that we talked about with the Community Engagement Commission was we felt like when we had a draft report, that it may be worthwhile, and this is because, because we will be brainstorming some changes to it, it may be worthwhile to maybe consider having a joint meeting. Would you all contemplate having a joint meeting with the Community Engagement Commission in August to work on our public participation plan for the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, excellent idea.
Yeah, DG?
Mr. Chair, I agree to it, but I, if I may insist on one caveat, that we indeed engage the Community Engagement Commission and that they are not just tchotchkes on a shelf. We've been too long working at this effort to get the community involved and it's it's unfortunate that although it appears they're being asked to stay engaged and involved, they're really not able to do the work that they, that this commission, that their commission was set to do. So while I agree with it, I hope that the outcome is not more of the same and that they are able to do something. Their input matters because their voice is coming from the people. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, we all hope that we have a, a a good discussion with the Community Engagement Commission.
Absolutely. And there, there, this is, we have a pretty big fence to paint in terms of community engagement related to the comprehensive plan. And it's, it's a very vital aspect of that comprehensive plan, particularly with all the changes that have come about with the Growth Management Act. We really need to get the community involved in this. And so more hands, I think this, I, I think that there's not a more perfect project for Community Engagement Commission to get involved in and to, and, and we really want to enlist their help in, in that process. And so I, I think that we see it as a potential for a great partnership as we work, as we work through the comprehensive planning process. So I'm, I'm very excited about it and I think they're very excited about it also. So I'm glad to hear that you're excited about it as well.
Yes, agree.
And that is all for my reports, commissioners' reports.
All right, do any commissioners have a report? Any reports? Comments, go ahead.
Where are we on the application criteria for the public events? Remember you discussed a while back, having somebody come on board with the city to develop those standards?
Yeah, so we have a recreation coordinator now. Mikhail Stevens is it? Yeah, Mikhail Stevens. We have, we have a whole plethora of new employees that have the first names for both their first and last name. It's very, very challenging. Anyhow, so, so yeah, so Mikhail is on board now. He has, Amy has actually kind of handed the baton off to Mikhail. He's been working on it. He's been working with both the events folks and also with our risk managers. And we can certainly see if he might be available to come back and give you an update in August. I don't, I, I can't say what his schedule is, but I can certainly ask him to come back to give you an update.
Super.
All right. Anything further? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Commissioner Jenk's second.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Let's go.
Aye.
Aye.
That'll conclude the meeting, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you everyone, good day.
Thank you all.
DG?
That was quick.